Thank you, Councilmember Oro. We know he's had difficulty with the line.
I can, I can send him the regular one and then pull him in. Yeah, let me do that.
Done something with my video. Can you guys still see?
No, you can see your background.
Yeah, I'm trying to get that fixed. I hit something.
Yep. There you are. A text from Councilmember Oro is.
Just emailed it off.
You have to restart his router.
Oh.
It might take some few moments here. Just had a text checking and it was in, we may have to start without it.
Do you have a quorum, Mayor, and that is your decision?
Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started? Call meeting order, regular joint city council fire protection district board meeting for July 20th, 2021.
Recording in progress.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Councilmember Oro, you joined us just in time.
Thank you. Apologies for the different background. I joined, I have a new computer and I can't find the background that I'm supposed to have.
That's quite alright.
I'll email that over to you, Councilmember Oro.
Thank you so much.
Go call please.
Councilmember Abujamas is absent today.
She's excused.
Excuse, yes. Councilmember David Oro. Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Here.
And Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here. Councilmember Oro, I don't know if you're frozen, but can you hear?
I think it's.
I can hear you, but I'm a little.
Okay.
Yeah, I can hear you. I'm a little internet challenged and I'll be working on it. I may hop in and out until this is resolved.
Well, we'll work with you on that. Okay, report on closed session confirmation reportable action, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You convened in an open session at 4:32 PM to address the matters agendas for closed session. Consideration for both the fire district and the city. After ascertaining there were no public comments, you adjourned to address those. Matters in closed session, matters for the fire district were taken first. Those concluded at 4:52 PM. The balance of the time from 4:54 PM until conclusion were with respect to the city matters. And with respect to both items as to whether there is reportable action, I will accomplish a written report upon return from. Closed session consistent with the provisions of government code section 54, 957.1. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions?
I just want to offer also, Councilmember Abujamas did not participate in closed session either.
Correct. Okay, I would say clerk wants to read the participation for electronic.
Thank you for joining us for the July 20th, 2021 City of American Canyon City Council meeting. This meeting is being held entirely virtually in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The format tonight will be similar to that of an in-person city council meeting. In addition to the Zoom platform, the meeting is being broadcast on cable TV, channel 28, on YouTube, and streamed live on the city's website. You will see the city council members on your screen along with members of city staff. All members of the public will participate in a listen-only mode. Public comment is invited for non-agenda items during the public forum section of the meeting. And on each agenda item, when the item you wish to speak on is called, please follow these steps to make your comments. When the mayor calls a particular item you wish to speak on that item, click the raise hand button. If joined by computer, if joining by phone, dial star nine to raise your hands. When it is your turn, I will announce your name and invite you to speak. You may see a message saying the host would like you to unmute your microphone. If you get this message, click unmute myself and begin speaking. To unmute yourself by phone, dial star six and begin speaking. Video will not be turned on, only audio. You have up to three minutes to make your comments to the city council. At the end of your three minutes, I will ask you to conclude your comments quickly and I will mute your audio once you're done. Please only press star nine to raise your hand for the item you wish to speak on, as the raised hands will be cleared at the end of each item. The agenda for this meeting is on the city council's page of the city's website. As is the standard practice, community members are allowed to comment one time on each agenda item. All votes at tonight's meeting will be taken by roll call. We ask your patience and understanding when there are technical difficulties. This concludes my introductory remarks.
Thank you. Moving on, city clerks announcement pursuant to government clause 5492.3 is stated in the agenda. Moving now to proclamations and presentations. Well, I would like to congratulate Tracy Elphus being appointed as our city clerk. And pleased to issue her the votes of office. Okay, please raise your right hand. Okay, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Teresa Gilfis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, now we'll continue with you now being appointed and officially sworn in in your official.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have a proclamation leadership translation of the Napa County Sheriff's Office and American Canyon Police Department. City of American Canyon proclamation in recognition of the law enforcement career and retirement of Napa County Sheriff John Robertson. Where Sheriff Robertson started his law enforcement career at San Mateo Police Department in 1981. During his 10 years at San Mateo Police, then Corporal Robertson established expertise in the field such as hazardous materials, explosives, and incident management. And whereas John joined Napa County in June 1991 as a deputy sheriff for the Napa County Sheriff's Office. And whereas John served 30 years with Napa County Sheriff's Office, where he has served as a hazardous materials handler and instructor. Mounted posse liaison, field training officer, Lakeberry S and Marine Patrol Sergeant, Investigations Bureau Supervisor. Administrative Lieutenant, Major Crimes Task Force, Representative of Field Operations Division Manager and Incident Command Manager, to name a few. He promoted throughout the ranks from Deputy Sheriff 1, Deputy Sheriff 2, Corporal Sergeant Lieutenant Captain, Under Sheriff and Sheriff. Whereas John's innovation in law enforcement services agreement in the City of American Canyon, John came up with a concept of fixed cost contract. A model that serves to benefit both municipalities, the residents, and the county. Today, John's fixed cost law enforcement contract model is being used or considered by other sheriffs and state. Where John deployed the European high-low siren and evacuation tags for utilization in emergencies. And whereas the Napa County Sheriff's Office would like to acknowledge Sheriff Robertson's 40 years of law enforcement service. Sheriff Robertson epitomizes commitment to community through his unwavering dedication, loyalty, and outstanding service to the county. Now therefore, I proclaim that I, Leon Garcia, Mayor of City of American Canyon, and on behalf of the City Council of American Canyon. Represent our entire community to honor the 40-year law enforcement career of Napa County Sheriff John Robertson. Who expressed our deepest gratitude and highest respect for his distinguished service. We thank you for your leadership, your friendship, for helping protect and serve the residents, business owners, and visitors in American Canyon and Napa County. We wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I hope you can hear me. I'm not sure.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Sheriff Robertson, it's been an honor to work with you. We all express that.
Well, thank you very much and thank you for always being there. Also, the city council members throughout the entire county. No matter what the meeting is, you all are always present and it's certainly appreciated. We've certainly come a long way, definitely in the 30 years that I've been here in Napa County. But also, as you said, with the fixed cost contract, I want to thank your city for allowing us to. Get creative and work on a solution that would allow you to kind of budget your, your, your funds. And also, I've got to thank Jason for his, and some previous city managers for the. Basically, pleasure in dealing with them on a day-by-day basis, week by week. Not only with your business transactions, but through our emergencies and allowing us to use our personnel where they're needed in the county. American Canyon has always allowed their personnel to go wherever the need is in the county and have shared their resources. And I know that it's sometimes this is a burden, especially financially. But it's for the greater cause of the people and that's what we're about. So I just want to really thank you. Also, it's, I found it very interesting when I started looking at the length of time that we've been here, just in a short period of time. The people that you have developed in our agency to come forward into leadership roles. You produced from your chief's position to under sheriffs and two sheriffs. And I assure you, I, I need to apologize first that this transition. Was faced with some issues at the last moment and I, I thank you and Jason for your patience in dealing with that. And I want you to know that, well, I know that Oscar has a huge spot in his heart and mind for the City of American Canyon. You're always going to be there. You're always there with us at the sheriff's office. But Oscar is going to carry on a tradition of humble leadership that is, that is needed. Throughout the county, but also with the contract cities. So he is going to be great to work with for your council and your city manager. In days to come, but I, I really want to thank you for developing and it's, it's through the coaching actually of your council. The mayor and the city manager, where you're teaching them how to manage not only a city council. But they're dealing with the sheriff, they're dealing with mayors, they're dealing with the city manager, but they're dealing with the board of supervisors. And they're dealing with the community as a whole. Not only do they show great service and loyalty to the people of American Canyon, which has been incredible. It's an incredible experience. I wish, I wish everybody in our office could have an experience in American Canyon, but the people that are assigned to American Canyon don't want to leave. So that's kind of a problem for us a little bit. But it's not my problem anymore. It'll be, it'll be Oscar's problem and, and it actually isn't, it's a great problem to have. We're so fortunate to have the people in our community that support us, you support us, and we certainly appreciate everything that you do for the county as a whole.
Well, thank you, Sheriff Robertson. I just would like to express my appreciation through your leadership. The quality of service we receive from the officers in American Canyon is just top notch. You know, they're very, they're very approachable. They're very concerned with how they interact with the families and the issues that come up in town. I had a friend who I worked with who bought a house here on Crawford Street and moved to the area. He's out in the front yard. Police car stops by, rolls down the window, these, oh, what's going on? Officer says, you're new here, aren't you? He says, yes. Well, welcome to American Canyon, it's at the office. I mean, that's the type of relationship that's established for us. And that starts from the top now and I thank you for your leadership role in that. We have excellent service.
Thank you, Mayor.
We wish you all the best in your retirement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Take care.
Thanks, Jason. Take care.
And Mayor, I wanted to just take a moment and acknowledge our interim police chief. I think Rick, if you're on the line there, if you wanted to. Pop open your camera if you got a moment, just to introduce Rick real quickly. He's the interim role for us. You'll be hearing an update. From him later this evening under some more management reports, but I wanted to put a face to a name for those in the community who haven't yet been able to meet. Chief Greenberg, he's been out in the community already, meeting everybody. So welcome also to Rick and. Sheriff Ortiz also here joining us for a moment. We wanted to take a moment and acknowledge, acknowledge Oscar and his new role as well. So welcome, Oscar, as well.
Well, welcome both of you. Chief Greenberg, good to see you again. We've had our coffee meetings and this worked out very well. We're glad to have you on board, sir.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
And now Sheriff, yes, well, you know, no medicalism from the heart. You know, your thoughts are be with us and I know you're going to have, make sure that we have excellent service in American Canyon. So we appreciate that and congratulations again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council and everybody in American Canyon. It's been a great three and a half years and I'm not far, but thank you.
No, you're, that's all good. All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for being here and we'll be moving on our agenda. So all the best. See, next would be a proclamation, Jim Cannon, 18-plus years of public service.
And going him over, here we go. Okay, Jim, you're in the meeting.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Okay. Well, we're honoring you today, gentlemen. Thank you very much. City of American Canyon proclamation honoring Jim Cannon for 18-plus years of dedicated service. Whereas Jim Cannon began his career with the City of American Canyon in January 27, 2003, as a full-time code enforcement officer. And whereas Jim was responsible for improving fairness and transparency in the code enforcement practices and policies. And whereas over the course of his career with the City of American Canyon, Jim managed and resolved approximately 7,000 code enforcement cases. And whereas Jim worked daytime, nights, and weekends, sometimes under dangerous conditions to keep American Canyon residents and business safe from hazards. Whereas Jim demonstrated his dedication to public service by personally assisting with outside resources, yard cleanup. Coordination, solid waste, construction boxes for residents in need. And whereas Jim always served the city in the highest levels of its integrity and professionalism, including. And whereas during his career with the city, Jim obtained a CACIO Code Enforcement Certification. In California Law Enforcement Telecommunication Systems, that's C O E T S certification. Whereas the city wishes to honor him for his service to our city, community, and residents. Now therefore, we resolve that the City Council of the City of American Canyon hereby recognizes and thanks Jim Cannon for his loyal and generous public service to the city for 18-plus years. Jim, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
You're welcome. I seem to be having problems getting, oh, there I am. Okay.
There you are. Yes. We're here too.
So thanks, thanks for the kind words. I appreciate the acknowledgement. It's been a long, a long ride and. Some of you know, I, I started with Mark. Things certainly look a lot different today than they did when I started. And all I'd really have to say is best wishes to everybody and I'm really looking forward to my retirement.
Oh, good for you. Congratulations. You know, it's, this is not an easy job, but you know, you handle it with great style and compassion and. And dedication to helping support people. Fix the problem. Yeah.
Thank you.
So all the best to your retirement.
And thank you for acknowledging too. I mean, there is a lot of contentious times, but yeah, you do your best.
That's right. Well, and you have done more than your best, Mike. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
People here want to comment here. I saw Councilmember Joseph, Vice President.
Yes, if I can add, first of all, Jim, congratulations on retirement. And I just want to emphasize, Jim's been here for 18-plus years and so after a while you become an institution. But to put it in perspective, before Jim, I think the city went through about a half dozen code enforcement officers in about a. Two or three-year period. So there was, there really was no stability and Jim provided that. And so thank you for your service. Hang in there and let's see who we, who we can find to replace you. Congratulations.
Thank you much.
See, Brett Cooper has his handle. Mr. Cooper.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. And Jim, I wanted to just congratulate you on your new stage of life. Just wanted to say how much I appreciated your membership and the community development team. It's no secret that code enforcement is a very challenging position and I really appreciate the professionalism that you brought to the job every day. And your dedication, working nights and weekends. I have no doubt in my mind, American Canyon is a better place because of you. And just wanted to speak on behalf of the whole team. We all feel this way, how much we appreciate you and, and are happy for, for your next stage. So thank you.
You're welcome. And, and I've enjoyed our team as well. I, I enjoy every new person that comes in and. Showing them the way, so to speak. So thanks. That's nice.
You have a very good teacher. I've, I've learned a lot. So you're absolutely right about that.
Thank you.
Well, Jim, all the best in your retirement. Congratulations. And thank you for your service for the city and our residents.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for the two thumbs up, Teresa.
You're welcome, Jim. Congratulations.
And to you too.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to our, next there's a proclamation park and recreation month, July 21.
Yeah.
City of American Canyon proclamation. July, Park and Recreation Months. Whereas park and recreation programs and facilities are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of American Canyon. And whereas park and recreation programs and facilities are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community. Ensuring the health of all citizens, contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas park and recreation programs and facilities build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease. Provides therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled. And also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs and facilities increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property value. Expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, and attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas like open spaces, wetlands, and other natural areas are fundamental. are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, improving water quality, protecting groundwater, preventing flooding, improving the quality of air we breathe, providing vegetative buffers to development, and producing habitat for wildlife. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas Parks and Recreation Team pivoted in the last year to the best, to best serve the community during the pandemic, facilitating many vital communities' resources, including weekly food distributions, monthly food deliveries, making well-being calls, and providing resources to senior residents most at risk, offering programs and resources in unique different ways, supporting both county and local vaccine clinics, hosting drive-through community events to maintain community spirit and engagement, and providing access to parks, trails, open space, fitness and aquatic opportunities to rent it for residents to maintain their physical and mental well, well-being. Whereas the City of American Canyon recognized the benefits, says the community, and fund derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that Iliam Garcia, Mayor of the City of American Canyon, to hereby proclaim the month of July twenty twenty one as Park and Recreation Month in American Canyon, and urge all citizens to recognize and encourage the use of parks and recreation activities in American Canyon and share their stories about parks and recreation resources, and pack their lives on our social media sites. What's right?
Mr. Mayor, Member of the Council, thank you. I'll have just a couple remarks here. Um, thank you very much for proclaiming uh July at Parks and Recreation Month. It is a a national occurrence. And uh generally, this opportunity is meant to remind our residents or our council about the great values and benefits that parks, trails, open space, programs, and events bring to the community. Um, but based on our attendance at Fourth of July this year, I would say our community seems to get it, and that's great. I appreciate that. So with that in mind, um, I'm looking at um a little bit different approach. Uh, as much as your public comment from Chair, uh PCS Chair Clarence Memorel, um humbly identified uh a lot of credit uh of our success and the things that we do to myself. It's really a team approach, and that's really what I want to spend time, uh, a couple minutes on just today, recognizing the team and sharing my pride and appreciation for their undoing, uh, can-do spirit and serving every facet of our community. Uh, I know that this goes to many sectors of our country, but in this last year, we were certainly throwing a curveball that seemed unhittable. Uh, despite our team, despite this, our team persevered, put on their creativity caps, figured it out, and in very unique ways, how to serve our community, whether it was getting food to those in need, facilitating new partnerships, putting new spins on existing programs and events, they found a way to create community. I'm very proud of them and want to take this moment to appreciate uh their team and just call them out by name. There's a couple of them sitting on the Zoom here, so they'll have firsthand recognition. Others will maybe see it on YouTube. So our team is Alana Ben, Recreation Supervisor, Liz Lozano, Admin Tech, Jody Michael, Aquatic Supervisor, Vincent Lynn, uh Recreation Coordinator, Stacy Johnson, Recreation Coordinator, Mariah Caldwell, Caldwell, um Admin Clerk. And uh, I'm also going to recognize Sherry Fother, Fathers, who was formerly an admin clerk with us and is now in the City Manager's Office, and Shalane Zuti, who recently moved to another organization. Um, in addition to them, there are forty members of lifeguard, office assistants, and rec leaders that support them and what they do. Uh, they've done a fantastic job, especially in the last year during this pandemic, and I wanted to share my appreciation for all that they've done going above and beyond. So with that, uh, thank you for giving me this opportunity and proclaiming Parks and Recreation Month and specifically recognizing our team.
Well, certainly, we all commend you for uh the service to the city, you and the and the team there in Park District. They've had a very challenging time with the pandemic, and certainly, as you commented on the creativity cap, uh, uh, well, when the road gets rough, uh, when the going gets tough, it's tough get going, I guess. That's what the Marines said. Uh, and you guys have done an outstanding job of keeping things together. And we look for more, for more activity. Certainly, as you mentioned, the Fourth of July was uh, wow, everybody was getting back together. What a joyous moment. Uh, and I think the energy is still surrounding us. So certainly, we all appreciate what uh you do with your, in your leadership and making things better for American Canyon. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a good evening.
Appreciation to all the members of your team that you just recited. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on in our agenda.
Mayor Garcia, for the record, I want to state that uh Item Seven did receive one written comment from Clarence Memorel.
Okay, thank you very much. Ready to move on, Council? Okay. We know a public comment, item's not on the agenda. They would receive any public comment on items not on the agenda.
We received one comment on items not on the agenda from Jason Kishner.
Hey, thank you. We are there to agenda changes, Council. Do you have agenda changes for either the the American Canyon Fire Protection District or the uh City of American Canyon?
I believe we had a late-minute add-on uh that the city attorney can speak to better than me.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, this is consistent with Government Code Section fifty four nine fifty-two, nine fifty-four point two B two. It's something that's arisen within seventy-two hours of your meeting tonight on which uh action is required. I'd request that you uh consider and confirm addition to the agenda of an assignment uh under the Development Agreement between the City and AC One with respect to the Watson Ranch specific plan uh between uh AC One uh and uh assignees designated as McGrath Properties, American Canyon LLC, and Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens LLC. Uh, this is similar to the same type of assignments that you've handled, for example, at the, excuse me, uh Fire Protection District Meeting of June twenty-nine, with respect to DK Horton, uh Bay Area Inc., and previously with respect to Pacific Works Properties, Lot Twenty-four. Uh, to, I would request you add it to the agenda as Consent Item fifteen point one. It requires a two-thirds approval vote of those uh presents. It would be three out of four. I would parenthetically note that there's a matter agendized for your consideration consent at your August third meeting, uh which would delegate this authority to myself and the City Manager um to, so these matters do not have to come to the Council uh for consideration and approval. That would be the request to add the matter to the agenda as an agenda item uh under consent.
I'll make that motion.
Second. That's what, was that your second?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Teresa, young.
Let's go visit muted. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, Council. Hey.
Mayor Garcia, I'm sorry, one more thing. Um, we do have two hands raised, and I believe this is for um public comment on non-agentative items.
Okay.
I apologize. So here it is.
We clearly returned.
Whenever you're ready to go back. Yeah.
Well, we'll take that up now before we take up the consent calendar.
Okay. I have uh Justin Hamilton Hole. Justin, you're muted.
Hello, hello, Mayor. I see Kelsey. I want to shout out our new C Claire Tracy. Welcome on board.
Thank you.
And what, yeah, and what hap- uh, the birthday, July twenty, we probably hide in a timber, I see hall. It it it's gonna happening soon? That's my question, so.
So you're not understanding the question of birth, something with a birthday?
No, um, my question is that are you going, going back inside the timber? The how can be, what can bike? Because I noticed that Napa, who did it to make a cool thing, like camera on there so I can just see it in there, but um, that they're waited, gonna be doing that sometime. So that's my question.
So you might be referring to uh, when we're starting to have live meeting again, we're gonna have a hybrid type of a thing coming together.
We are, and at at the end of this meeting, I'll be giving an update on our plans for hybrid council meetings in person and and remote. But we, I'm gonna get it at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Jason Holly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Justin. I have uh Chris James. Go ahead, Chris, you're muted. Chris, go ahead with your comments. You're muted.
Yeah, I'll start again. I thought I was uh unmuted. Um, yeah, thank you very much. Technology, eh? Um, yeah, so I wanted to keep this brief. Um, I wanted to start a positive trend within the city, and I welcome some of you to join me in this. Um, so I may sound a little dumb or naive, but um um, a lot of us um know the the landmass to our west called the landfill or the the city dump or it's the Vallejo. It used to be called the Vallejo Dump. I want to start calling it the island or the island loop. Um, and you know, it's been, you know, called the the Vallejo Dump for, you know, outside of our community for like over twenty years or or going back, you know, decades. Um, but I think it's kind of a negative thing. So if you, you know, if we could have Long Island, I can't see why we're, why we we can't have the island, right? Um, and you know, we, in in our family, we call it the island. We've done that for over ten years of living here. We, you know, we look out to it and we see it as an island. I know it's connected. Maybe that would change with, you know, the new COVID thing that's being discussed. Um, but it'd be, I think it'd be nice to actually, you know, instill some, you know, positivity around this, especially around some events like, you know, the the reindeer run. We could have, you know, the part, segment of the run called, you know, the Aguna Loop. Um, and I invite you to, I encourage your family and friends who, you know, they have little kids and say, um, let's go around, walk around the island, you know. They they don't know it's not an island, you know. So, you know, and it may take decades or multiple generations to change things, but it'd be great to to change this from, you know, the dump or the landfill to the island, right? So let's just try and come up with some creative things, how we can actually change this. And I encourage the city to participate in this, in various events and um activities that go on. And ultimately, you know, I know that, you know, to change things on maps is is very difficult, but you know, ultimately, you know, we we get to write those maps, and I'm hoping, you know, at some point, um, you know, we can change things for the positive and call it the island loop. So I encourage you to join me in that, um, even if it's just in in um, in your social circles, uh, et cetera, if it's not officially called the island loop, okay? Um, uh, I'll le- I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your positive statement. Thank you. Uh, anybody else?
There are no hands raised.
Right, okay. And we'll go back and on to our agenda. We were on any agenda changes. We had the one item added to the city.
Yep.
Mayor, we also have an agenda changes that relates to Item Sixteen. Um, the applicant has sent us a late notice that they would actually like to have this item continued. Uh, so we didn't address that during the item, but um just wanted to make the council aware of that potential change.
That's in the public hearings, correct? Just making it up. Okay, we'll deal with the consent calendar, American Canyon Fire Protection District. Motion to approve. Uh, so moved.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes, I'm still getting used to being first. Call.
Sorry. Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you. Move on now, matters relating to uh American Canyon City Council Consent Calendar. Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Who was the motion?
Councilmember Oro.
Oro, okay, thank you, thank you. And Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Council. Moving now on to uh public hearings. We heard from the City Manager, Ms. Holly, that uh Item Sixteen, the applicant's request is continued.
During the item, we should, we should at least address that and take it up at that moment. I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
All right. Now we're ready for public hearings.
Uh, now I think we're ready for the city's consent calendar.
Yes, that's what I just asked for.
Oh, okay. I'll move the city's consent calendar as amended to include Item fifteen point one, the assignment regarding Watson Ranch.
Second.
Rose's second recall, please. Oh, call, please. Council vote.
Okay, ready?
Just ready.
Okay. Oh, we're gonna motion again?
Well, I thought we had covered it, but uh maybe it needed to have that note notation there that uh we got an item, the title of the item, content.
Okay.
Satisfies us.
We're gonna do it again, Teresa.
Okay, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
We already motioned. We're waiting for.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just ready for a walk off. Sorry, Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes, I think we got it all that time.
Okay.
Moving on now to public hearings. Item sixteen, appeal the SDG Commerce two seventeen Warehouse Distribution Center Condition, initial use permit. And I understand from Mr. Holly, this uh applicant has requested continuation.
Correct, Mayor. The applicant uh has stated essentially in light of uh the receipt of a letter uh from a law firm by the name of Adams Bradwell within the last hour, um, they're requesting a uh continuance uh of Agenda Item Sixteen until uh August seventeenth.
August seventeenth, okay. Very good.
But at this point, uh staff's recommendation would be to um to continue the matter till August seventeenth. At this point, there's no sense in opening the public hearing or taking testimony if they've requested um this this full continuance. That would be staff's recommendation to um to continue it to that point.
And then we need a motion then to continue.
Yes.
Yes, correct.
There's a motion to continue this till August seventeen.
So moved. I'll second it.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Well?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you.
Um, Teresa, I do see a hand raised. Um, I'm not sure if this is a hand raised related to this matter.
It is a phone. Okay, we have a a phone comment, so I can't see who it is. I'm just gonna allow the talk. Hi, we're, uh, you're in the meeting, where uh, I'm sorry, I need your name, please.
My name is Tom Eccles.
Okay, and do you have a comment on a, on an agenda item?
Uh, on the SDG two seventeen commerce project.
Okay. That has been continued to August seventeenth.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all right.
Very good.
Please take a break, sir. My goodness, okay. Okay, continuing with public hearings, uh, item seventeen, Citywide Landscaping and Lighting and Assessment District Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Annual Engineers Reboot.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, as as Eric, I noticed our team is brought over. Um, just to summarize, uh, real quickly, uh, this is the second of two items that the council has asked to take uh each year related to. to take uh, each year related to the citywide landscaping and lighting assessment district. Um, I believe our assessment engineer from Harris and Associates is also available this evening. And um, homework director, uh, Erica Smithies. Uh, and maintenance utilities director Felix Hernandez are here to give a presentation and answer questions. So give us a moment and they'll be on your screen. There we go.
Again.
Thank you for the introduction, Jason, and uh, good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
We do have the the public hearing tonight for the citywide landscaping and lighting district. Um, the annual assessment, uh, Rick Clark is also here on the, uh, if there's any questions regarding the um, the actual assessment itself. And we have Felix Hernandez, if there's any other questions regarding specifics of maintenance, um, with the with the zones one, two, and three, but otherwise, um, uh, I was gonna give Rick Clark an opportunity to give a little quick presentation um, regarding the assessment this year. Um, he's just joining the the conversation here.
Rick, you're muted.
Yes, thank you very much. I was actually right going through the forty minute window of being re-issued into the into the meeting just as this started, so I apologize for that today. Um, I'll just run through it quickly. Uh, Jason mentions uh, basically what we're doing here. Um, as Erica said, my name is Rick Clark from Harrison Associates. Um, nice to see all of you again. It's been a little while. A couple of new faces out there, but uh, um, as you know, we've gone through this a couple of times. You understand what the process is. Um, and the, you know, the the Landscape and Lighting Act requires that there are two meetings that the city council conduct and hold each year in order to place the assessments on at the tax hall. Uh, this is the second of those two meetings. Um, and tonight we'll be conducting the public hearing, allowing any interested property owners to speak or to ask questions as they would. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, uh, the council may adopt a resolution to approve uh, the engineers reports and all authority assessments. Um, uh, in previous action on June fifteenth, the city did uh, conducted the first of the two meetings, preliminarily approving the engineers report. Um, a little bit of background on the district again, as you know, district was formed in two thousand one uh, initially as to serve uh, the Levine subdivision to do some lake, um, street lighting landscaping improvements in that subdivision. And during uh, subsequent years, the Vintage Ranch area and Napa Junction were annexed into the city uh, or into the district uh, as zones two and three. So now the district consists of those three zones. Uh, last year, the villages at Vintage Ranch, one hundred and fifty nine unit apartment complex was annexed into zone two uh, into Vintage Ranch, and that's located on the northeast corner of American Canyon Road and Highway twenty nine. Um, the maps that you don't see are part of your, uh, the engineers report that you were, uh, in your packet include the boundary um, uh, adjustments to include that annexation of of the apartment complex. Um, for the assessment, it's assessments themselves, uh, there was no change from last year. Uh, zone one's assessment amount is four hundred dollars this year and it was last year as well. Zone two for Vintage Ranch, it's three oh two forty two per EDU per home. And then zone three has two different scales or two different uh, subsets of uh, assessments for uh, individual homes, it's uh, two oh seven fifty six. And then for larger developments, it's one thousand twenty two per acre. And again, that has not changed from last year. Um, the annual CPI uh, was applied to those dollar amounts uh, not to the actual assessment, but to the maximum. Each of the zones has an annual escalation factor that's that is applied each year. Uh, this year, the CPI was one point seven two and change uh, for the area. And uh, so the maximum assessments were increased to reflect that dollar amount. Or excuse me, that that increase, just so you're aware, the zone one assessment amount was four hundred dollars. And the actual assessment for this year, or excuse me, not the actual, the maximum assessment for this year after applying CPI was six hundred twenty six dollars and twenty cents for zone one. Uh, for zone two, the difference being the actual assessment was three oh two, the maximum assessment is almost nine hundred sixty dollars. And zone three is two oh seven fifty six for the individual properties. Three fifty one is the maximum assessment. And again, for the actual assessment for the larger areas that are uh, assessed by acres, a thousand twenty two, whereas the maximum assessment is over twenty one hundred dollars. So there's uh, uh, plenty of room there between the maximum assessments and the actual assessments for each of those. That becomes important in in just a minute. Um, each of the zones, like I said, have that that escalator, which is a good thing. Um, each of the zones right now has a healthy fund balance. Um, that pays for uh, all of the improvements, the parks, the play equipment, landscaping, fences, medians, all of the things that are included in the assessments. And one of the things that's important about that escalator and the fact that it's there is that eventually those improvement items, some of them in particular, will come to the end of their useful life. And when that happens, um, even with those large fund balances that we have now, significant fund balances, there may very well need to be an assessment rate increase from what we have now. Um, those discussions and and the dollar amounts have been talked about over the last few years with the different staff that you've had. I know you've had a lot of staff turnover. Uh, so those can, uh, those discussions will continue. Uh, but I wanted to make you aware that um, there are um, there will likely need to be an assessment rate increase at some point, or at least a a jump from that low lower amount we've been charging the last couple of years to a significantly higher number. And that's uh, those large increases like that, whether it's um, whether we need to send balance ballots because it's a Prop two eighteen issue or not, it becomes a uh, a public uh, relations issue that we want to get ahead of. So if if there's going to be a large increase, we would certainly want to make the public aware of what's going on, why we're doing it. And um, let them know ahead of time before they just get their tax bill and see a a big increase. Uh, but again, those, that that's gonna be probably in the next few years. And we will continue to discuss those uh, specific items and the options we have with your staff as we need to uh, as we develop more of that. So um, that's that's the end of what I needed to say. Uh, you can, like I said, you now open the public hearing, conduct any uh, receive any comments and uh, make your motions as you as you see fit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, from the council, any questions of Mr. Clark before we open the public hearing?
Uh, yeah, I have a few questions here. Um, I happen to live in one of these zones. Um, and it's about, it's in the Vintage Ranch area, so it's three hundred, four hundred dollars a year, which I don't mind paying. Um, but I'll tell you, um, this this area here in Vintage Ranch is also straddled by paying for American Canyon Road, um, which is about twelve hundred dollars a year. Any increases in this area will be fraught with a big pushback considering that we're paying for an infrastructure project for at least the next thirty years for anybody who bought a home here um, on that. And so that is close to an eighteen hundred dollar extra bill on top of the regular tax bill that comes through. Um, and that needs to, if you haven't educated yourself on that, you need to remind yourself, you're not just looking at an LLAD. Um, but adding on top of a major infrastructure project that nobody else in the city pays for. Um, and you know, uh, that part of the improvement on the road, if you live in Vintage Ranch, probably you don't even really use it, honestly. Uh, because you go out straight through Flosin or you go out towards Highway twenty nine. So keep that in mind. Uh, as you think through the changes, um, Mr. Clark, you said significant increases. Uh, we tried that a couple of years ago and it was uh, met with a big resistance throughout all the neighborhoods. Um, you know, maybe there's more of a cola-like increase to get us to where we need to be. Um, and consider those, uh, you're not going to get um, a major increase of two, three hundred dollars per year on this. And you may want to think about smaller inflation-like indexes. So those are, that's my first comment on that whole thing. And I think you guys, uh, please consider that and 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 think through that as you come before council, because there's there's plenty of people who will push back on that. The second thing is, I wanted to actually add to it, even though there's major infrastructure things there. There's a piece of land right at um, the school. And Mr. Holly, I think you and I have talked about this before, and Mr. Hernandez, I think we might have talked about it as well. Uh, in front of the school, near the bus stop at the high school, is a strip of land that the city happens to own, and it is just barren dirt and weeds for most of the year. Um, and but it involve, it falls into the Vintage Ranch area of the LLAD. I would love to see that incorporated so that we can actually plan it. I think it's a sort of a one-time expenditure. And if it could even just match the landscaping that NVUSD has put in, it's a win for that area because it really just gets gnarly looking um, at certain points of the year. Green weeds in the winter and brown weeds in the summer. Um, but otherwise, thank you for your report and for not raising any rates at this time and allowing us to get away with it.
Understood. Let me just respond to a couple of those points. Thank you, Mr. Ora. Um, I understand completely what you're saying. I think you're absolutely right. Uh, in the uh, one of the, one of the things that we've done in the past, when we have faced the need for significant dollar increases to assessments, is to specifically look at it over a course of, say, a four or five years to pump it up incrementally uh, in that manner. So I understand that and you're absolutely right. Thank you.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, a couple of comments. First, although the Levine property owners won't appreciate it, uh, they too had an assessment above and beyond the lighting and landscaping district charge uh, that finance and water and sewer improvements. Um, and then secondarily, and Mr. Clark, it's not really your turf, it's more for uh, our maintenance and utility directors interest. Uh, in zone three, uh, the amphitheater area that uh, is part of Main Street Park, I hadn't been out there for a number of years, the vegetation's really grown over and it needs to be looked at in terms of trimming some of the trees, so it's a little more open and functional, because there may be musical opportunities uh, someday in the near future. So, uh, again, I I I get the drill on the on the assessment. I would agree ramping those rates up makes a lot more sense than just hitting you all at once. So, thank you.
Council ready for public hearing? Public hearing is open. Have received any public comment?
We have uh, no hands raised in the Zoom meeting right now. And we have not received written public comments on the side.
Okay. Well, that will conclude the public input. Uh, we'll close public hearing, return to council for for the discussion, desired action. We have a resolution if the county is.
And Mr. Mayor, before deliberation, I would like to state for the record that uh, it's perfectly appropriate for council member to participate in the proceedings, notwithstanding that he's within the assessment area. It's been uh, established in several levels of law uh, that there is no conflict of interest, financial conflict of interest, or appearance of interest, or appearance of impropriety for a decision maker to do so, because the impact of the assessment is equal upon all those who are in the assessment area. Thank you.
Give us your thoughts.
Mr. Mayor, uh, before we take action, can I uh, request a a report on uh, the level of public outreach that staff did during the process?
Since, this is Erica, sorry. Um, since this was a normal um, engineers assessment, we did not do any additional public outreach on this item. We did have a couple of residents um, reach out to ask us about maintenance um, on a couple of zones. Um, we acknowledge them. Um, they were just concerned about maintenance needs. Um, and as far as I was talking on Mr. Clark's uh, response about next year or ramping up in the following years, um, staff plans to meet in the next couple of months and go over the evaluation report that was done this past year.
Breaking up, sorry. We lost the, we lost audio.
Yeah. Another little quick add to that, Mr. Joseph, uh, the only required um, noticing for a meeting like this is a ten day uh, publishing in the newspaper one time. Uh, and I believe that was fulfilled.
Although I appreciate that, I I think the idea is that because we've had a lot of uh, a lot of engagement and passion over these hearings in the past, uh, especially considering Councilmember Oro's points about rate increases. I think it's always prudent to reach out to the the neighbors and at least give them an opportunity to talk to what's going on and what's being anticipated. So I think if we don't do that, we are setting ourselves up for some problems down the road. So that's my suggestion.
It's a great point, Vice Mayor Joseph, as we start to get a game plan around some of these future needs and and a- address, you know, these are needs that the residents are paying for, and we want to make sure that we're tailoring, you know, what's going to be delivered with what their desires are, right? So there, th- these are for a specific purpose. If they're going to be additional costs involved, we want to make sure there's buy-in. Uh, but before we get to the the next hearing for the next year with an increase, we want to make sure that we've gotten some buy-in ahead of time. Uh, and there's this agreed upon level of service that they want, um, and the understanding, the correlation with the the assessments that are proposed.
It's come up in the past, uh, a part of that conversation related to uh, what Vice Mayor Joseph was mentioning. It was in fact quality of service, uh, of dead vegetation being removed, uh, maintenance of vegetation, and we had the uh, let's see, uh, we have a ornamental pear tree planted a lot in many places. I think we lost about seventy of those diseases goes through them from time to time. But uh, I think residents expected a level of maintenance, uh, and concerns about that and voiced that. So I think part of our review of that, I would look at, uh, I'm sure we must have some sort of a checklist to go through and says how well we're doing, or maybe comparing both now with photos of them.
Yeah, good evening, uh, Mayor, Council, Felix Hernandez, maintenance utilities director, I could speak to that. Um, we're, uh, we are evaluating, currently going through the valuation process with Bright, um, it Brightview, um, previously coast landscaping. Um, I met with Mr. Butler, uh, in regards to the two zone three, we had a very good meeting, very good discussion. Uh, for that particular zone, we are increasing the level of service. And from there, we're moving on to uh, the other two zones. I've had discussions with uh, the public works superintendent um, with regards to the evaluation of of the service. And um, we are looking at other um, other options with with other vendors currently.
Any further discussion needed from council? Council's ready, we have a resolution.
Uh, Erica, did you want to say something? I saw a little hand move.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think my headset went dead for some reason, but um, I apologize. I'm not sure where you dropped me, but um, I plan to meet with um, Director Hernandez and um, most likely Director Bogard and and likely Creighton um, with regards to um, the 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 evaluation that was done this past year on all the zones to bring it up to to renew it, so to speak. Um, and definitely an aggressive outreach program before we come to council with anything, um, we definitely need to do that and ramp it up before we bring any increases. Um, we need buy-in from the community before we do something like that. So I just want to let you know, we concur with that direction and um, have listened. Thank you.
You. Great. If there's no further discussion or comment, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of American Canyon approving the twenty twenty one, twenty two engineers report for the American Canyon Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District, approving the budgets within the engineering's report, confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying collection of annual assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty one slash twenty twenty two.
Hold on a second. Motion second, roll call please.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you.
Don't forget about the school bus stop in front of the high school.
Okay, moving on to our, our, I, I don't know, business items, number eighteen. Intent override Napa County Airport land use commission determination, Oak Hill multifamily residential project. So this evening, council, we're dealing with the airport matter, not the uh land use of the project.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we bring on uh staff to provide a, a staff report and presentation, uh Brent Cooper will be here along with uh other folks representing uh the project. Um just wanted to kind of echo what Mayor Garcia mentioned. This is one of um what could be several uh matters that are for the council over the next a couple of months. And uh tonight's focus is really around the airport uh land use process. Uh it, in and of itself will be a two-step uh process if it goes forward. And tonight is the first step being this, this notice of intent. So while this is a wide-ranging topic um for development on Oak Hill, really the matter before the council tonight relates to land use particularly uh and the airport's land use commission's recent determination. So um wanted to make sure we were more focused on that aspect of it and not some other aspects of the project. I know uh Brent Cooper and others will be joining us uh momentarily. So with that, we'll turn it over to them. Thank you, Teresa, and uh wait for other folks to join. Thank you.
Um thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't know if I have a um a video, but um can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Excuse me.
Um wanted to introduce, uh Will and he will be giving a presentation tonight. Um he is the project manager for the Oak Hill project. Um and he has, uh joining with him, Nick Johnson. He's an aviation and airport land use expert. And then our city attorney will also join um in with the presentation. We have a, a very informative one for you tonight because this is really the first of its kind question that we brought to the uh city council. So uh hey, we recognize it's a little bit different and um uh it's, I guess, professionally very interesting. Um and uh everyone has prepared very well for tonight. So uh with that, I'll turn it over to William and um he will uh begin a presentation.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and members of
Thank you. Good evening.
City Council. Uh I will load this presentation up. All right. Yeah. Can everybody see okay?
Yes, thank.
So the uh, the Old Hill project and the uh consideration for the intent to override the airport land use uh commission determination. So I want to start with a little bit of a background of the project itself. Um here's the project and the vicinity map. Uh the project for Old Hill is divided into two parcels, parcels A and B. Um they're kind of west of the uh Napa Junction Elementary High School. And um it uh consists of about thirteen acres for parcel A and seven acres for parcel B. Um a quick description for the projects is that it's proposed as uh multifamily residential condominiums. Parcel A will consist of two hundred and six units. It's the upper parcel. And parcel B will consist of eighty-five units, which is on the lower parcel. Here's a site plan for parcel A. Uh I want to uh mention that this is a bit rotated, so north is to the right side and uh and south is to, to the left. Um it's parcel A consists of thirteen buildings, uh thirteen residential buildings and one recreation building. And access is from uh Napa Junction uh road up in the knuckle there. Parcel B is uh bit east of parcel A and, and it consists of five residential buildings and uh one recreation uh building as well. The access is going to be from Napa Junction Road as well. Here is some of the architecture proposed for the site. Um the buildings are three stories tall, about thirty-nine uh feet overall. Um well-articulated features um are modern farmhouse aesthetic with functional balconies and uh earth tone colors to, to match. So with that being said, the, the major uh focus today is to talk about the airport land use uh commission uh and how it, it affects this project. Of parcel A, there are thirteen buildings, uh thirteen residential buildings in all. There are three located within the uh zone D of the airport land use uh compatibility plan. And here is a graphic showing um the, uh where the zone D and zone E is divided. So with that uh being said, I do want to introduce uh Mr. Nick Johnson. He is a land use uh consultant for the applicant. And uh Nick, are you there?
I am. William, can you?
So you can start and I'll be your slide manager.
William, I really appreciate it. Thank you for the introduction. Uh Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, uh thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this evening to talk about the project. Um as City Manager Holly had uh had noted and, and William just reiterated, uh tonight's focus uh of the project is very specifically on just the issue of the uh airport land use commission's uh finding of inconsistency on the project and uh how the city can move forward on the matter. Um again, my name is Nick Johnson. Uh I'm with Johnson Aviation. I'm an airport planner um uh by trade and also uh focused on airport land use uh planning projects uh around airports like this one, uh helping to find balance between uh the safety and, and noise compatibility of development near and, and around airports. And, and so it's my pleasure to be here with you this evening. Specifically with this project, as, as William pointed out, um we, we've got a small portion of zone, of uh parcel A uh within the uh airport land use compatibility plan or ALUCP Zone D, as in David, um where three buildings are there, fifty-one units. Uh the rest of, of the project, both uh the remainder of parcel A, as you see on this diagram, and um uh parcel B are within the airport land use uh planning zone E or in Echo. Um and that area, the, the portion within E is essentially already compatible with the airport land use plan. Um we're really kind of focused in on uh this portion within Zone D, uh these, these three buildings and fifty-one units. Um to talk a little bit further about this, I think it's important to point out right from the get-go um that the uh, the ALUC uh is charged with preparing the ALUCP or their plan for the, the land use around the airport. Uh the last time that that plan was uh, was made and updated was, it, it was originally established in nineteen ninety-one and its last update was in nineteen ninety-nine. Um to, to say the least, there have been um it two updates to the Caltrans uh land use planning guidelines since then uh in two thousand and two and two thousand and eleven. Um and so much has changed uh associated with the airport and with the planning around the airport, not the least, American Canyon uh was incorporated in that timeframe. And so um, so this plan, uh the, the ALUCP is, is really an outdated plan. And so what we have done is we've looked to the project and the use of the airport as it is actually today and, and how it's planned for the future and what the current standards are. And so William, if you would go ahead and, and advance to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit further about that. Uh what, what this diagram shows is a little bit wider view from the last diagram. It shows uh to the very top of it in the northern portion, the runways at uh Napa Valley Airport. Um in yellow down to the bottom of the drawing is the outline of the project area itself. Um the, the project i- is about uh al- uh almost two miles from the airport um a- as the crow flies. Um and this area in red that you see is the ALUCP Zone D uh that you saw in the earlier diagram that covers just that small portion uh of the very northern reach of the project. Um so, so when we talk about Zone D, this is the, the large area that we're talking about. One of the things that I would point out about this, this area is that this is not the area directly in the approach and departure path of the runways. This is really kind of the sideline area around the runways um and, and away from, again, that direct arrival and departure area of the runways. Um these, these zones um as they're constructed in, again, the outdated ALUCP um are based on actually the FAA's airspace uh diagram for this area and not on the safety zones and the actual safety risk associated with development in this area. So William, if you go to the next slide, uh we'll talk about um the, the more recent standards. So what you see here is, uh as I described at the outset, Caltrans uh Division of Aeronautics is charged under state law to actually put together a handbook to guide ALUCs in developing their land use plans. And um there, there, that guide is actually supposed, i- i- by state law is, is to be used for this type of planning. And as you see here, this, this diagram depicts the project, again in yellow, relative to the uh Caltrans Handbook Zone Six, which is kind of the same uh your, or the equivalent zone to the way that Zone D is described in the, in the uh ALUCP. And William, if you, if you advance another slide, we'll show a comparison between the two. So what you see here in this, this series of slides is, is really that um, that comparison between the two. And you see the area kind of in the middle, uh that's kind of in purple is the Zone D. And then again, the area in red is, is uh ALUCP Zone uh, it's Zone D and uh compared to the handbook Zone Six. Again, what you see with this project is that when you apply the modern standards uh as, as developed by Caltrans uh for this type of planning, what you find is that this project is well within the, the safety zones a- and compatibility uh for those zones. Uh William, if you go to the next slide, uh we'll talk a little bit about uh airport noise. Uh so another major issue, so safety obviously is one major issue that um is, is the concern under the State Aeronautics Act for airport land use planning. The other is noise, um trying to uh ensure that particularly residential development around airports is compatible with the operation of the airport over the long term uh to avoid noise complaints that may put pressure on the airport. And I point this out, uh these are the original noise contours. And the area in blue outlined here is the fifty-five decibel uh community noise equivalent level or C N E L noise contour. This is essentially almost to the background level of noise in the community for planning purposes. The state standard is actually higher at sixty-five decibel C N E L. Um so this is, this is a very um uh conservative noise contour, again for airport land use planning standards. And this is directly out of the ALUCP document. Um the, the issue with this is that uh the planning, again, as I stated earlier, the ALUCP is well out of date. And it takes into account the planning for the airport back uh over twenty years ago. And the, the level of activity associated with this contour was a forecast for about two hundred and ten thousand annual operations of, of aircraft into and out of Napa Airport. What today, the FAA's um tw- uh twenty forty-five forecast for operations at the airport only go up to about fifty-three thousand annual operations or about a quarter of the operations that created this very large noise contour that, as you can see, is clearly well away from the project. Um the, the, the project is, isn't even in the, the basic vicinity of the noise impact area for the airport. Um and so William, if you go to the next slide, um what we're going to talk about today again is the, because the ALUC found the project uh inconsistent with their, as I've said before, outdated plan. Uh now the, the issue comes to you as the city council to take next steps. And state law allows for you as uh the final arbiter of land use within American Canyon to make the decision, but to do so methodically and with all of the facts. And so what we're going to start tonight, uh depending upon your decision, is a collection of those facts um and, and input from everyone, including the ALUC and Caltrans, to give you the opportunity to make a final finding on the project. And so with that, I, I think I'm going to turn it over to Bill Ross, uh the city attorney, uh to take you through the remainder of these slides. And I'll remain and be available for any questions that you have, might have about uh the process or the specifics of the, of the project.
Okay, could I have the next slide? Um this is a proposed timeline that's uh been prepared, reflecting action that the council's taken uh with respect to the project, uh the application that was made. Um I think the February eighth day in uh this year is critical because that's the first day that the Airport Land Use Commission, the A O U C, learned of the project in detail. Um the planning commission acted upon it. They make a recommendation to you. We have to submit the matter after a preliminary determination as to the land use concerns to the A O U C. That was done on March twenty-sixth. And then there was the subsequent hearing on June twenty-third by the A O U C. Can I have the next slide? Right, um prior to this hearing yesterday, in fact, there was a letter received from county council that made some suggestions uh to your council about uh how you should uh respond to the A O U C decision of inconsistency. And doing it, almost all the, all that they raised in this letter was raised in the hearing before the A O U C itself and resolved there. But I think it's worth uh commenting on, on just a couple of those issues. Um that letter maintains that the project is, has to be reconsidered, redesigned to be consistent with the A O U C. But as has been developed, both graphically and described before you, uh why would you design a project to be consistent with a plan that is dated nineteen ninety-nine as recommendations from the Berry Agency that's supposed to implement the safety and noise attenuation provisions, the Caltrans recommendations for purposes of consistency? It's like you're going in a circle. It's like an idle act. Rather, it should be more appropriate to um have the project evaluated based on those standards that are reflected in the Caltrans documents and any other evidence that would be forthcoming, for example, from the FAA, as is developed in the staff report to make your con- decision. The procedure for doing that is the um uh unique proceeding of the State Aeronautics Act that Mr. Holly made reference to at the beginning of this proceeding, which she would initiate uh tonight to make the appropriate findings for consistency. And those findings would be based on uh public safety as to flight over, overflight and to noise attenuation. Can we have the next slide? The alternatives that are presented to you, and these are set forth in the staff report, uh is, you know, really your choices. Staff recommendation is for the third one. Uh but um uh you know, the first one in essence is the, to redraw the plan so that you're outside Zone D. to redraw the plan so that you're outside Zone D. That's a suggestion that's been advanced by the ALU staff consistently throughout this process. And I think you see the reasons why that would be kind of an empty or an idle action by the council. It doesn't do anything to address the real concerns that the ALUCP should address of public safety, flight overflight and noise attenuation. The next one, I think is, it's a technical issue that's set forth by the timing in this matter. There were more than sixty days between the actual referral of this project after the Planning Commission approval in March until the actual action by the ALUC on June of, June twenty-third of this year. I think that's an issue that you should address upon final consideration. The other one, the last alternative is to make the project consistency findings to ensure orderly airport expansion and land use measures to minimize excessive public exposure to noise and safety. That's the staff recommendation. It's the third one of the alternatives mentioned. To make that finding, you have to go through the process that you initiate tonight by opening the thirty-day comment period. Allowing for the, you know, after you adopt the resolution that's in the packet, which makes very specific findings. We refer that then to the ALUC and the FAA for response, which would be formulated in a staff report probably in the first week in September to present to you to finish this administrative process prior to making a final decision on the general plan amendments and zone changes that would be applicable to the process. So to bring it back to the recommended action, we would recommend that you adopt the resolution that's contained in the staff report that would allow for notification to the Airport Land Use Commission, the State Division of Aeronautics, Caltrans of the city's intentions to make, to find that this project is consistent with the purposes of the State Aeronautics Act and to overrule the Napa County Airport Land Use Commission determination that the project is inconsistent with that plan. The formal findings and the necessary supporting actions are contained in the proposed resolution, which is attached to the staff report. That would conclude our summary unless there are questions.
Any questions from council? I'd ask the question here on that, the so the Airport Land Use Commission has her plan where it goes back to nineteen ninety-nine. And in turn, there's been a Caltrans has made some provisions, what they consider best practices, I would guess I would characterize it that way for use plan use around airports. So who ultimately has the higher authority here? The Caltrans or the airport? I mean, who's, who's? So we have a business here with direction.
I, I think the answer legally to that would be that the Airport Land Use Commission is the decision-making body, but they must formulate a plan that's consistent with the state act, the PUC, you know, those provisions of the Public Utilities Code with the guidance. And I think guidance is probably not the word that I would use as a lawyer. I'd say Caltrans is the agency that's authorized to make the administrative construction of the State Aeronautics Act to achieve a legally adequate airport land use plan, which does not exist here. So until that plan exists, the evidence would suggest subject to opening this period and getting further comment from the ALUC and the FAA that there needs to be a revision and you can override. Mr. Johnson, do you like to add something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ross. I, I think that, you know, directly to your question, Mr. Mayor, you have, have the final decision-making on this. You have, you know, as long as you comply with the State Aeronautics Act and, and provide those findings that you have complied with the purposes of the State Aeronautics Act with regard to safety and noise. The, the city controls land use within the city boundaries and, and so the, the reason why this process i- is so specific is because ultimately that power does shift to you at if you make the notice and intent to overrule and then follow through with that overrule. And so, you know, that, you know, just to, to put a point on that, that particular portion of the process.
Oh, I'm understanding correctly, just to reiterate. City has a land use authority for the area, but has to be consistent with the state Caltrans Airport safety requirements.
Okay, that's correct. And, and so both state and federal requirements. So as Mr. Ross had mentioned, the FAA is in charge of airspace around the airport. And so the project is going through the process to be cleared through that process as well as, again, being consistent with the known standards and Caltrans is, as Mr. Ross put it earlier, the authority creating those standards by law, by state law.
Well, the material you showed us, the slides with the areas around the airport, there is no consistent with current standards.
That's correct. The, the, the Caltrans portion of it is yes. The ALUX portion, the outdated portion is not.
Okay, thank you. That's Councilmember Joseph. Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, a, a comment and then a couple of questions. The comment is, and again, we're now talking twenty-five years ago, so my memory may be may not be as good, but my recollection is that when they amended the plan in nineteen ninety-nine, it was to expand the Zone D area. And my recollection is if you looked at the original plan and looked at Zone D and compared that to the Caltrans configuration of today, the, the, the ALUC plan and Caltrans lineup much better based on the original plan than they do based on the nineteen ninety-nine amendment. So just for the sake of pointing out what we've been saying here tonight, it looks as if the ninety-nine amendment might not have had any kind of valid justification in the first place. It's just been there for twenty-five years. So that's my comment, if anybody wants to go to the trouble of researching it. The questions are, I have three of them. One is the status of the FAA determination, because I'm looking forward to, to getting that covered. The second is the ALUC talked about noise levels going up the hill. And living on Oak Hill, I will acknowledge sound does travel up. So if there could be some discussion about noise issues as it relates to being on a hill. And then the final one is the liability exposure. If we override the ALUC, does our liability change compared to what our liability might be if we had approved it? And, you know, the other, you know, the, the Zone E structures. So those are my three questions.
So, so let me take those first and others may want to, to go further with them. So with regard to the FAA status, so, so we have submitted the, the project to the FAA for an airspace determination. That determination is pending. We expect to receive it, you know, basically any day now. It, it, it should come in with note on that FAA process. FAA also, as you'll see in your staff report, FAA also allows for an exemption under that same statute. And what, what that allows is, in this case, when you have the water tank that's on Oak Hill and the antenna network that's on top of the water tank at Oak Hill, those structures are higher than anything around the, the project. They're the highest point and they're also closer to the airport than the project itself. The FAA allows for an exemption under that, essentially terming it, you know, that the project is shielded from a taller obstruction in the immediate area. So certainly the project is on Oak Hill. And it is higher than the airport surface and the surrounding area, but the, the water tank and the antennas are higher. So the FAA process takes that into account. And like I said, that determination from FAA will be imminent. With regard to noise and the hill, single event, you know, something that the ALUX raised several times was single overflights by aircraft that might overfly the area of, of the hill. Community noise equivalent level or CNEL takes into account all of the noise associated with aircraft in the community, including all of the single events. And then it does something further. It, it waits evening time noise, essentially giving them a five-decibel penalty, so essentially making the noise as though it's higher in the evening. Like we all experience noise, when it starts to quiet down in the neighborhood, we start to experience higher noise. Nighttime noise, there's a ten-decibel penalty on top of that noise. So the benefit of CNEL for community planning purposes is number one, it is the standard by both the state and federal guidelines for land use planning around airports, but it takes into account all of the noise impacts in the area. And just as a side note on that, with regard to the potential future residents of these residents in this area, the ALUX requires disclosure and state law requires disclosure and notification that there will likely be overflight of this area. And so, so that disclosure process takes care of that general overflight. The noise though is captured within the CNEL planning standard. And then finally, the liability question that you asked. So under the State Aeronautics Act, when a local jurisdiction overrules an ALUX, the, the statement in the act is essentially that the airport proprietor, so Napa County Airport, is relieved of any liability associated with that action. Period. There is no statement within the act as to where, if at all, liability shifts to. It just says that the, the operator of the airport is relieved from that liability. And so it's, you know, it may sound like, and oftentimes you'll see comments like this in the discourse around an overrule. But the reality is, is that there is no ascribing of liability to any other party. It's just relieved from the airport operator. And so I'll stop there and, and others, either Mr. Ross or Mr. or Clark, you may have some other, you know, input to those points.
I, I would add this. There's a well-established body of law that says when there's a procedure that's prescribed by a statute and the local agency follows that procedure, then there's need to be compliance with the law. And you look to the underlying decision, then, of that local agency for claims of liability. The underlying decision of the city in this instance is land use. It's going to be a general plan amendment and a zone change. And under all kinds of established case law, that would fit under what's known as the discretionary unit immunity of the Torque, Torque Claims Act. If I'm correct, I think it's still Government Code Section eight thirty or eight twenty. And you would have discretionary immunity on that basis. So that would be a statutory analysis looking to what your ultimate decision is. It's a land use decision. That would be my comment.
This is Clark Morrison, I'm counsel for the applicant. The, the only other thing I would add is that if you go back to the slides that William and Nick put up earlier, city council's being asked to make a determination that the project is actually consistent with safety and noise standards adopted by Caltrans. And so in that, that part is very clear. And so it's hard to imagine even setting aside toward claims and and all the rest, that there would be liability shifted, given the fact that the project is actually consistent with Caltrans handbook, notwithstanding the rather generous overlays included in the county's ALUCP.
If I might, Leon, you'd ask you'd ask a question earlier. And I'd like to read literally right out of the Airport Land Use Accountability Plan on page one dash four, general approach. And it says, local governments which have the implementing authority for land use must then interpret these criteria in terms of their land use plans and zoning ordinances. So even the ALUX plan defers land use decisions to the city council. And so when you asked earlier, who has ultimate authority? It would be the city council as, I think Nick had previously mentioned, but it's literally in the Airport Land Use Plan.
And I would just add to that, and Nick alluded to this earlier. It is indeed Caltrans that establishes the standards. The ALUC interprets them and comes up with a zone plan and it makes consistency findings or inconsistency findings, but the, the case law that's been handed down to the courts is very clear that the ALUC's determinations are purely advisory. And, and the courts have actually used that phrase. So the consistency determination is advisory only as to the city. And city simply has to make its own findings that the project is consistent with the purposes of the act, which brings you around to the slides that William and Nick showed earlier.
I would also like to make one more point to Mark's question regarding noise and and either Nick or, or Bill or Clark might want to chime in. But in August of twenty twenty, the airport adopted their airport expansion SEQA document in which they conducted a noise study. And their noise study came back and said that the sixty-five decibel noise level is contained within the airport land that they own. We, for our project, also conducted a noise study and we were below that forty-five decibel reading on our property. Additionally, it hasn't been mentioned, but under the Uniform Building Code, we're required to build the units to interior noise levels at forty-five decibels. So we are well within, first, we will build it to the forty-five decibel interior noise level. And any exterior noise, we've proven through our noise study and it was included with our application package. But also it should really be noted that the Napa County, their airport noise study that they conducted also shows that we are outside of any kind of noise restrictions that the Caltrans and Aeronautical Act calls for. So we, we are well within all of the guidelines that are set forth in, in land uses and developments around the airport.
Thank you. See, Councilmember Oles has this.
Thank you. So the next steps here, we have, is, is this the hearing that we're holding in the, in the packet? It says we must hold a hearing and provide a, ALUX and California Department of Transportation, the Division of Aeronautics, a copy of the proposed decision. Is that what we're doing here right now?
No, not today. So today, this is just the action to issue an intent to overrule if you intend to do that. So if, if you vote to your intent to overrule, that then starts the comment period that several people have mentioned where that, that resolution and findings will be sent to Caltrans and to the Airport Land Use Commission. They'll have thirty days from the time they receive that to respond back to you in written, so that you can consider that in the hearing that you will hold on the project. And you can act, you know, if they do provide those in those thirty days, you need to include those comments in the record. And then also, when, when you do act, they, you know, they'll, they'll continue to be notified throughout the process. But you can also act without their comments if they choose not to provide them. So you're not stopped. So you're not stopped from acting. You just have to give the prescribed time period for them.
Okay, so, so the hearing will be in a future date. After we were to choose to move on this resolution tonight, we will have the heetering in a later date. Also notes that both, we, we've, we've determined that ALUC's decisions are advisory only, correct, Mr. Johnson?
That, that's correct.
But it also says Caltrans and their Division of Aeronautics is advisory only, correct?
So let me, let me clarify the role of Caltrans. So Caltrans, their handbook that they prepare to guide ALUCs by state law is to be used by ALUCs for the formulation of their plan. So obviously each airport around the state is a little bit different, one to the next. And so each local ALUC has to apply those general standards to create their plan for the local airport. The, the issue here is that that most recent update to, in 2011 of the Caltrans handbook has never been applied, obviously, to this, to this planning process.
I understand. So, but what I don't understand is if all of these roles are advisory, what's to prevent us to, to override? And this is not the case, but prevents us from overriding building a home along the fence line of the airport?
So you still have to comply with the State Aeronautics Act. And so, so what the State Aeronautics Act requires that you follow all of those guidelines published by Caltrans for noise and safety. And so those are the things that, again, provide you good guidelines for where it's appropriate to, to build housing relative to the location of the airport.
Okay. And then what you showed earlier today, or earlier this evening, or a few minutes ago, was basically we're, we're well outside of their, their zoning at the Caltrans level.
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council questions or comments? Council, buddy, should we open this up for public comment?
Yes.
Seeing that, public comment is open. Do we have any hands raised?
Yes, Mayor Garcia, I have a hand raised. Justin Hamilton Hall has a comment. Justin, go ahead.
My question is, air, oh, where that gonna be? It's gonna be next door? The city hall or back behind the old trees that where church is? I, I saw the nice map that doing, you, you gotta, you gotta do a good job on that map. It could be be behind the building, behind the house, that's my question.
Maybe I can answer that. I'll try. It's up down the hill by the water tank. And it comes down on the east side of the hill. So it's high up, high up on the hill. Oak Hill.
Okay, thank you so much. Oh, this could be very nice.
Any other public comment?
We had a written comment from Napa County Office of County Council. That is the last comment that I see.
All right. That concludes, that's, that's all public comment. I'll post public, and we'll come back to council for further deliberation, desired action.
There's no further comments. I am actually going to move to adopt the staff recommendation, which is a resolution number 2020, 2020, I guess, next in order. Resolution of the City Council, the City of American Canyon, notifying the Napa County Airport Land Use Commission and the State Division of Aeronautics of the city's intention to find that the Oak Hill multifamily residential project is consistent with the purposes of the State Aeronautics Act. And to overrule the Napa County Airport Land Use Commission's determination that the Oak Hill multifamily residential project is inconsistent with the Napa County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan.
I'll second that. Motion second roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Thank you.
One other question as far as timeline goes. I know there's a 30 day period and all that. Could someone give us a kind of a highlight of when we'll hear the actual hearing on the override? When we'll consider the general plan amendment and so forth?
I think it would be probably the meeting of September 7th.
Everything could be done on September 7th. And then the following meeting would be the second reading of the General Plan Amendment.
Everything being the hearing on that's required under the State Aeronautics Act. Then initial consideration for first reading of the General Plan Amendment and Zone Change. Yes?
Okay, thank you.
Motion, second?
We did a.
We, we did a, Mayor Garcia, he just had a follow-up question after the.
Okay, all right. So we completed this item? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work on this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next item is the 19th Declaration of Drought Emergency Stage Two Mandatory Compliance. Water.
Thank you, Mayor, as Felix Hernandez has brought on and some other staff maybe listening as well. This item relates to the ongoing drought conditions facing American Canyon. And really the need for us to all do our part and pick up the effort to conserve water. I'll let Felix kind of chime in with the, with the presentation. But there is really a call to action tonight. Really hoping our customers can buy into the program and, and really help us achieve our goal. So with that, I'll turn it over to Felix. Certainly happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Holly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council of Public Staff, Felix Hernandez, Maintenance Utilities Director. Also have with me tonight Dominic Patrick, Water Systems Manager. Getting, getting right into this, I'm right in. As, as has been well publicized, this year we have persistent drought condition, conditions throughout the state and locally due to historically low precipitation throughout the state. Back in May's, the council meeting, we did give council an update on the historical water demands, 2018 to 2020. Of note, the demand in 2020 of 2,884 acre feet was nearly identical to the demand in 2015, which was 2,890, which was the year that we had the last statewide drought. Based on those demands through, the demand that, that we've seen through June, we do estimate that the 2021 demand will be approximately 2,900 acre feet. Starting the year in, in 2021, we started out this year with a total amount of 1,552 acre feet of regular supplies available. We are facing a deficit of approximately 1,348 acre feet this year. The city has other sources available, again, which we've outlined previously, but I will touch on again here is the Emergency Valeo Permit Water, UBA Cord Water, Dry Year Transfer Program Water, and Advanced Table A Water. We are also working to reinstate approximately 557 acre feet of Table A carryover water, which was erroneously reclassified by the Department of Water Resources in 2020 as a result of a transfer between state water project contractors and on the city behalf. So the amount of additional supplies available, it does match the anticipated deficit. But we have very little margin as, as we're moving through this year with no supplies to be carried over into 2022. Council action does provide the Mayor and City Manager authority to carry out transactions to procure additional supplies to reduce customer demand is the key strategy, which we, Mr. Holly touched on. We're, we're really driving that home, we're trying to drive that message home this year. So this action is consistent with the governor, Governor Newsom's May 10th, 2021 Declaration of Drought Emergency for Napa County and elsewhere. So again, going, going back a little bit to June 1st, the council did adopt the Resolution 2021-36 Declaring of Stage One Drought Emergency calling for the voluntary 10% reduction in water use by all city customers. The, the, the residential, commercial, industrial, and governmental are subject to the same amount, the same 10% reduction. We don't, we don't, we don't divide those things into different categories. We say, hey, everybody's got to reduce by 10%. Generally, the 10% reduction can, can be achieved by the, the, I'm not going to go through these everyone, but previously we, we outlined five steps there on our website, which when we get into our presentation, we'll touch on these again, where customers can go through stage one, the different criteria, different things that they can do to reduce their, their consumption. As we're looking through, we start projecting, we're looking at the data. Unfortunately, demand since May hasn't achieved the desired outcome. The residential customers, we, we have seen a 5% reduction when compared to last year, but the commercial customers have increased demand by approximately 10%. So simply put, the trend is just, it's not decreasing enough. We need further action for the remainder of year 2021. And a 20% reduction in demand is needed to counteract the overwhelming response, or underwhelming response. So I want to point out that something that, that we, I haven't touched on this with City Manager Holly, but in, in the, we're seeing that our, our residential customers responding. But I'd, I'd like to, to point out that with, through the COVID response, what we think is happening with this 10% is that we're seeing that, that our commercial customers are, have, have businesses and they're open as compared to last year. So even though we're not hitting that, that, that 5, 10, we're probably not going to hit the 20% mark on our, on our commercial. We believe it's, it's because of what happened during the pandemic. Sorry, I hit the wrong button here. So with that being said, it's important to distinguish the hierarchy of the different types of water and the categories that we, that we look at. Health and safety, commercial and economic and decorative, those are all applicable to this, this discussion. An example of health and safety use would be drinking, cooking, bathing. And it's worth noting that the state does set a standard of 55 gallons per person per day for that purpose. So health and safety use, 55 gallons per day per person. For, for American Canyon, the population roughly 21,000, that would equate to approximately 1,300 acre feet per year. So that remaining 1,500 acre feet is either going to be in that commercial, economic, or decorative category of, of water use. An example of commercial economic use would be businesses, those that utilize water in their production. Economic, commercial, water serves a purpose. It contributes to employment, economic activity in the community, which I, I just kind of spoke to in that with, with regard to the pandemic. Examples of decorative use would be outdoor landscaping, fountains, swimming pools. Decorative use of water doesn't fit into those other categories. Just bear with me for a moment. My lighting is very poor. So going through and picking this back up. So as, as we, we, we touch on those categories, in general, health and safety is the priority, followed by commercial and economic, and then the decorative use. At this time, a drastic reduction, elimination of decorative uses is needed. Of note, so irrigation of turf, it's the single largest decorative use of, of water. We're targeting that for elimination. There's a distinction between decorative use of water for commercial industrial properties versus residential properties. So what, what we've been able to do in that regard is we can go back and look at the, the usage, our commercial use, usage, residential usage. And then if we have commercial accounts that we see here using a lot of water, we can see, hey, do they have a bunch of turf or not? It's again, not categories the same as the residential where we have cash for grass as well, which we'll touch on later. Bear with me if you will. So the simplest way for the city to realize this 20% savings through the end of 2021, would be for council to declare drought emergency stage two. Staff does recommend delaying them the implementation of certain provisions of that, namely the enforcement of the mandatory 20% reduction and drought surcharges until a future date. So the primary, primary reason for that is that we believe there's more effective work and cooperation with our customers that can be done to reduce demand rather than to implement punitive measures. We, we've already have some outreach and stuff again, which we'll touch on in our presentation, where we've had, we've had some positive responses. We'd rather take that approach where we're, this team approach rather than a punitive approach. There are also practical and logistical utility billing challenges that we need to overcome before surcharges can be implemented appropriately. So again, that would be at a later date if, if councils chooses to do that. So as we implement, implement these practices, now hopefully we can forestall the punitive measures and subsequent stages mandating reductions, including stage three, which would be a 30% reduction mandatory. Stage four reduction, 50% mandatory. The drought strike team, we do continue to identify city facilities where consumption can be reduced. The Kimberly Park has been changed for, changed over to recycle water for irrigation, which it results in a moderate savings. We've also completed the, the switching of, or installation of water for urinals at various city facilities and serves roughly 240,000 gallons of water each year. We're focused on, on potable recycled water supply facilities, the parks, buildings, enforcement and public outreach, public outreach now, maybe enforcement at a later date. In addition, we are doing some outreach through the, through our website, city managers, emails, updates, things of that nature. And one of those things, again, in our presentation, but I'll touch on it here. Meet Me in the Street Event, which we did have a booth there. We're going to be at future events as well. And we'll have more information for our customers, more low flow shower heads and things of that nature. This is council priority programs and projects. Infrastructure, develop and maintain infrastructure resources to support sustainable growth. The fiscal impact, it reduces, reducing the demand will decrease the revenue received from Sonnet Tree to Water. But in the short run, the water fund has sufficient funds to withstand the short term increase in cost to acquire additional supplies while we see this, this decrease in revenue due to reduced sales. There, we also have impeding purchases, purchases through Dry Year Transfer Program, $665 an acre foot, the UBA cord water is $435 an acre foot. And then Valeo Emergency Permit Water, $1,270 per acre foot. So nevertheless, in looking at that, if, if the fund endures a prolonged period of reduced revenue, it's likely the current water rates can, can be reviewed and adjusted to reflect the increased cost of providing the service. We're currently preparing a request for proposals for utility rate study, which will review these water rates along with sewer and recycle water rates. The alternative is, although it's, it's not a part of this action tonight, but the alternative is council could direct staff to bring this back, guide them back to a later date, say August 3rd. And at that time, declare a stage two drought emergency, which takes further steps to impose the mandatory demand reductions and post fines and surcharges. So at this point, we're saying, hey, let's do, do this modification. Demand reductions and post fines and surcharges. So um at this point, we're saying, hey, let's do, do um this modified stage two. Council can also decide, hey, later on, we're, we do um stage two, and we'll say like the full blown stage two, where we have mandatory reduction means and post fines and surcharges. With that, if there are any questions, I will get into the presentation with, with Water Systems Manager, Mr. Patrick. Let me uh.
Yes, just a quick question. When we first talked about it, we talked about the ability to put together. Tables of data showing how much water was actually used by classification, residential, commercial, public, unaccounted for. Do we have that? And are we planning on presenting that to the public or at least to the council?
Uh yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Joseph. We do have that information. And uh we're, we're, we have the information and we're developing the means to gather more information. Through, through some software that we're, we're working with um a consultant. And that software is called AquaTrax. There's some exciting things we, and if you don't mind, we can, when we get into the presentation, I'll have um. I will have uh Mr. Patrick speak to that, but we do have that ability. We have the data. Um it's in all the information that we're gathering and surely we can present it to council.
Thank you.
Let me um.
Please continue.
Uh yes, thank you. Here, let me share my screen here. Now. Here, there we go. So um drought strike team report July twenty 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 one. Hopefully everyone can see this.
Yes.
All right. I have to uh move my stuff so I can see properly. We have our, our strike team here, um everyone, the different divisions, utility billing, divisions and departments. Park maintenance, water reclamation, water treatment, distribution, recycle water, uh comms and outreach, and then our development and engineering. The, the city's website is our main area for communication with our customers where, where um we. We have all, a ton of information there for customers related to conservation. To save our waters, what, what we're uh kind of a statewide program that we're, we're, we're following with that theme. And folks can sign up for the uh my water portal here. My water portal currently have two hundred and sixty one customers. We do use a, a advanced metering infrastructure to help to conserve and prevent water loss. That allows customers to log into the portal. They can see exactly what's happening with their account. Um it empowers community members. We provide that customer portal through the AMI. And complete transparency over the individual volume of water consumed. Um our customers can log in both residential and commercial. It's an intelligent tool, has several, several capabilities. Um daily, weekly, monthly water tracking, comparison data, ability to set up alerts to notify high water consumption. So as, as Vice Mayor Joseph asks, we definitely can um provide that data. We can provide the data to council and to the public, but here is a great way for the public to, to access. Sign up for the water portal and they can look at their individual account and say, hey, what am I doing and how, how am I tracking? Here we, um we, we have our progress meter. This is something that's going to be added to the website as well. Um and it shows where we're at. Um in this particular case, the meter would be ten percent after tonight, that full meter would be um twenty percent. So here we're. Looks like we're running on empty. Yeah. These are, these are the outlined, that these outlined, um that I said would speak to stage one goals reduced by ten percent. The actions that, that our customers can take. Producing the number of days that they're going to water, inspect all their irrigation systems, repair leaks, adjust sprayheads. Um reduce those minutes of runtime for each irrigation cycle. Utilize water conservation incentives, rebates programs that we have um available to the city. Limit the duration of showers, five minutes or less, turn off faucet when you're brushing your teeth. So again, all stage one goals reduced by ten percent. Current status residential. Current uh meter residential customers looks better than last time. We're at a half a tank, if you will. We want a ten percent decrease. Our customers are doing um residential are doing. Much better than commercial. Currently at five percent uh decrease in consumption, I will say this, we were gonna. Save this information for a little bit later in next report, but what we're seeing, um the most recent numbers and trends. Is that we're seeing that our residential customers are, are um set to hit a target of fifteen, so fifteen percent reduction. Through uh the end of this month is what we're projecting. So hopefully that, those things, uh projections shake out and we do it. I mean, hopefully we do better with um twenty percent. Current status, commercial users. We've had a nine percent increase as compared to last year. Again, um. You know, they're, they're not hitting the target, but. We need to, I think we really need to analyze and look at this really closely um in how it relates to the pandemic and. Our, our uh commercial accounts and it, and maybe even go back further. Instead of doing a comparison of last year, we can go back, say, five years and look how it hits and tracks every five years. Because we have multiple parameters to be looking at with that, with the pandemic. Internal operational changes, communications outreach, water for urinals at city, so it is done, check. Um service leaks repaired. We've, we've hit thirty eight this year. Um previously, we have reported, I believe we, we reported thirty eight leaks, known leaks, and we have now repaired thirty eight. So staff continues to go out in the system, um identify and repair leaks as, as, as they pop up. But as of right now, we're, we're tracking with thirty eight out of thirty eight. Meet me in the street event. Um we're going to hold another event. We, we were in uh attended in, in uh July. We were also going to be out there every month, every time they have it. Mr. Patrick, Water Systems Manager. Ms. Phillips, um our lab analyst, both do uh, we're out there. We, we asked that you go see their smiling faces at the next meeting in the street. Recycled water. CityofAmericanCanyon.org forward slash recycle water. Like I mentioned previously, Kimberly uh Park was um inverted. The reclaim irrigation's been added. Um that savings roughly fifteen thousand gallons per week. Recycled water, uh the residential recycle water program, we now have a hundred and thirty three residential users that have signed up for that. Maybe just do that. Um we still have two stations available, eight AM to three PM, Monday to Friday, um at the uh. Water reclamation facility, one five one is at a court in the courtyard. Courtyard is going to be, uh we, we initially had it open for Saturdays. We, we recently changed that to two Saturdays just because of the, the amount of traffic that we got was pretty low. So courtyard opened first and third Saturday of the month beginning in August. We are, we are launching a residential delivery program. It's, it's, it's ready to rock. Um what that is, thirty three residents have signed up, so they, they still have to go through the recyclewater.org. They have to fill out the information, their information, get an approved container. But now we're going to have a schedule where we're, the city staff are going to go and deliver water to. Customers that have signed up. Which um I will say has been. I, I, I mean, it's, it's been really, we've already gotten positive feedback. We've taken comments from, from the public and um whether it's from the meet me in the street, folks calling in. Um giving us feedback, which is why we open on weekends and then we, we also started the residential delivery. Because we had folks say, hey, I can't, I don't have the strength, right? I'm, I, I don't have the strength to lift this, this water tub into my truck. I don't have a truck, things of that nature. So. We're providing this service. Where we uh, we would rent a water truck and we go deliver the water. We're, we're still in development, but we have it ready to launch. Rebate programs. Forty five uh applications are in for twenty twenty one, cash for grass. Uh one dollar per square foot of turf removed, per side maximum seven hundred and fifty for single family residents. Up to seven hundred and fifty square feet. Twenty five hundred is for homeowners association, multi-family, commercial, institutional, um up to twenty five hundred square feet. We have replaced uh the toilets, so the toilet rebate program. Replace the toilet with one point two eight gallon per flush with high efficiency toilets. At a hundred dollar rebate, plus save up to forty percent underwater budget. Um twenty six toilets replaced in twenty twenty one. Something that we're also doing is we're, we're um. Looking at doing a uh for our commercial users, where we uh water, water free or waterless urinal rebate. So I know the toilets are, are, have been in the past have been targeted, but. Um being that the city's moving in that direction with the water for urinals and having uh. I, I just threw it out there when I met with, with Mr. Butler. He was super excited about it. Said his folks that, that he's um has leasing would be excited and happy to install water for urinals. So. Going to be um hopefully launching that, and we have staff looking into grant money through uh state and federal grants for that. And we have the stage two mandatory compliance. Um in addition to the mandatory twenty percent reduction for each water customer. And in, in addition to the stage one um conservation measures that we previously had uh outlined. The following activities are prohibited. Use of water for the purpose of gardening, landscape irrigation, washing of vehicles or equipment between hours of four PM and six PM. Washing of sidewalks, driveways, parking areas, tennis courts, patios, other paved areas, irrigation of turf on street mediums or water. Um irrigation at any time and if conducted in a manner resulting in runoff in the gutter or other drainage main system. Use of water to fill a new swimming pool, uh a spa, a pond, or similar irrigation basin of water. Now operation of any ornamental um on or into other structures similar to uh. You know, or not uses. Want to point out that um something that's not outlined in here is that in, in the stage two. Compliance for, for these categories, it does state that unless otherwise, uh unless coun- council or otherwise approves via um ordinance. So like we're doing tonight, where we're taking stage two and we're kind of tampering it back a little bit. This, this, it, it does uh, does allow for that. So. It's not noted in, in the particular site, but I wanted to note it. Call to action, it is call to action, commercial, commercial customers, please, you know, end, end your ornamental water use. Residential customers, sign up for the water portal, be mindful of your use. It's, it, we, we just really can't stress this enough, call to action for, to all of our residents of American Canyon. Um any questions, feedback, suggestions? I'm going to uh keep this up momentarily, so if we need to refer back to it, uh but I'm happy to take questions, feedback, suggestions.
Thank you. Very comprehensive report. I look forward. Sounds like uh. We're adjusting on, off the plan from the last drought and with some uh new components added to it, so. Yeah, thank you for that. We have uh. Uh it's probably too early yet to tell, but you know, on the, some of the my water accounts and things like that, we know how much water that's saving.
Um with you, Mr. Mayor, you're referring to, since we've launched the portal.
Yeah. I think this is um.
Yeah, it, it's hard to, to, to quantify that. We can say that uh since. In, in conjunction with this, obviously we've had and the, the portal, which just happened to launch at the right time, if you will, I mean. Not that a drought is a good thing, but um. We, we've seen that five percent and like I said, we're trending towards fifteen percent for the uh end of this month. I can't say that it's because of the water pool or not, or because of our outreach, I'm really, but. They, they kind of go hand in hand.
Well, nothing else. It creates uh more awareness about our consumption.
Stop sharing here.
Any questions? Oh, uh Councilman, Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, well, thank you for the report and I have signed up for the water portal and it is a very flexible, useful tool and. And sure enough, I had some family over and, and I hit my threshold of water, which I didn't normally do, so. It, it is very useful. Um so I give you kudos for that. Uh the recycled water delivery service is very exciting and I need to actually just find a spot in the backyard to put the uh, the container and, and. Get on to moving there as well. Uh I think. Can you identify some of the things that the city can do? I mean, switching back to pot or recycled water for Kimberly is an example, but. Does the city have other projects that we could follow through on? To kind of save some water, even though, you know, basically can we pick up some of the load for the other customers by doing some things that, that we have on the works?
Uh yes, thank you, uh Vice Mayor Joseph. We, we have um, the water for urinals is one, one small step, if you will, but every, every drop counts. Miss Smithy's is also um working on some, some project, recycle water projects where we can. Get uh recycled waters to some of the other parks. So it's through, through our CIP projects. So we are doing some things. Uh I'm not certain on the timing of those things. And there, there is some uh state funding available as well that we're pursuing. Um one thing we are going to do with respect to any, any changes that we've made internally to conserve on the potable. Is we're tracking those meters as well. So we're going to be using the portal just like anyone else, right? Uh Mr. Patrick is, is tracking that, but what we have, uh we've switched over Kimberly, the facilities that have the water for urinals and things like that. So. You know, it's, I don't know if, if um this is available to speak to any of those projects or Mr. Holly would like to speak to any, any uh Calvert projects or anything of that nature that we have in works.
Yeah, Erica, uh there, there's Erica popping in. You want to talk about uh Benton Way projects and? The um central projects out on Tower Road?
Sure, um we have, can you hear everyone? Here, we all right. Um. We have Benton Way was slated to start design um this fall, but we're going to try to ramp that up now. Um I don't know if you can hear me all right, and then I'm just rejoining.
We can hear you.
Good. Um so we are, we are doing the uh Benton Way design and then we're also working on. Uh Devlin Road connection, um the background utilities, as you know that, but we also have um a, a county. County uh commercial applicant um with a will serve letter um that will bring, extend that Tower Road. Recycle water line up to the industrial area um just north of South Kelly Road. Which would allow for more customers to get online and get off the city potable water supply such as the waste, the transfer station. Um and some of the high water users such as um the concrete, I can't give the name of the companies up there, but um the top of my head, but. There is some large total water users um and the county limits. There's also Napa Logistics and some of the other industrial park areas that will be online as soon as the Devlin Road extension is created and, and tied in. It's not there yet, but we're very close. So it'd be great to have those connected by the fall um in light of the drought.
Just one other project to add, um the Old Hill project that council just recently took a couple of steps on. Um as part of their zero water footprint compliance, I had proposed to extend recycled water to the Little Lake field. And so there's another uh project where um, you know, it's a large city park uh currently on potable water. Uh and as a part of zero water footprint, uh we convert the Little Lake field to um, to recycled water. So. Other examples of how we're applying those kind of offsets. Um that, you know, realistically is not a, a twenty twenty one project. That's probably a twenty twenty two uh implementation, uh if it does eventually get approved, but. Um yeah, as we look even beyond this year into next year, laying the groundwork for some of those uh future projects. Uh with the name of the game, really trying to find um the right water for the right use, making sure all of our outdoor uses are really. Converged to recycled and just maximizing uh all those opportunities.
The, the follow up to that though then is. At what point do we do such a great job of selling recycled water that we start running low on recycled water? Do we, uh do we still have a good comfort zone?
We're within the comfort zone right now, but it's a fair question that we're, we're analyzing. Um. We don't have a continuously looped system either, and so that runs into some challenges with, with pressure and dead end systems. One of the advantages of the Watson Ranch project will be their extension of recycled water service. Eventually through Newell Drive and some of the other utilities, we'll actually end up with a looped system, at least on the east side. And so that will help with system redundancy and pressure. So um, you know, we will uh eventually reach a, a, a ceiling onto what. The volume of, of recycled water that we could actually deliver. Uh we're also looking at um. Opportunities at the reclamation facility itself. Some of our production uh is uh governed by our, our processes. And to the extent there's some optimization on our processes, it would make uh recycled water available more often. So. Um you know, I, I know the Napa sanitation district, for example, does a lot of recycled water and. Um you know, we're kind of, kind of chasing them as, as someone that we're wanting to, to set our mark against. Um we currently recycle fifteen to twenty percent uh roughly. And we, we think it'd go a little bit higher. We think a thousand acre feet uh a year is kind of that ceiling that we would bump into, um you know, and that's on a, a community that. that we would bump into, you know, and that's on a community that uses, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-nine hundred acre feet a year. So that would be a really great achievement if we got to a thousand.
I'd like to add to that, Mr. Holly, and that we just, we just spoke with the, the our Water Reclamation Systems Manager this afternoon about this. So to, to give some perspective, November of twenty twenty of last year, we were, we were reusing approximately forty percent of what was coming in. Essentially, forty, forty percent of what was coming in to the, to the rec facility was going back out to recycle. Right now, we're hitting at sixty to seventy percent of our influence being recycled and used in the system. Also, Mr. Patrick, if you'd like to touch, I didn't, I think I drank too much coffee tonight. That's what Tom, if you want to talk about some, some of the things that you're working on that can address Vice Mayor Joseph's questions about how we track and AquaTrax with that.
Yes, we didn't present any graphs right now. But that we are working with AquaTrax and AquaTrax is helping us take our data, eliminate human error. And it's using the AMI system to not only categorize, categorize, but break down commercial, residential versus city. And so it's going to be a very helpful tool for us in the future. But next city council meeting with the drought team, we will present a graph for you.
Thank you. We're also, we have some exciting things going, being developed through AquaTrax. Some conservation stuff related to our customer usage. I know I spoke with Mr. Holly about it previously about Water Coin. Their incentives for our customers signing up for water portal, saving, reducing your usage by X amount of gallons or by a certain percentage. But we have some incentives built in and we'll be able to track that through AquaTrax and, and roll that out. So we're working on some, some really exciting things.
Currently, currently Jen and Shelby put a raffle together. And anyone that signed up on the customer portal got put into that basket. And they're continuing to incentivize by saying, sign up. We have more raffles to, to give out. A part of that Water Coin would be that, 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 that lottery pick would, would grow with good behavior. And that good behavior would be checking in with your, your account and watching your water flow. We'll be able to track and see how many times did you actually go and look at your own water? And, and we could also include articles. If you register for recycled water fill stations, any kind of good behavior or help. Essentially, it would give you another ticket or at least points, water coins to receive prizes. I believe overall, we're, we're putting the tools together. And, you know, when it comes to challenges, it brings the team and the city closer. And I think within time and more public outreach, as maybe in the street, we saw right from that night on, we saw a boost in customer portal sign-ins and recycled water users. So I think time is on our side as well.
One of the, the data pieces we are going to be looking at, I think it's a really interesting question that the portal itself, can we figure out how much it's helping? You know, we do have the ability to analyze the usage of that small data set, the two hundred and fifty-some odd residential customers, for example. What might their average per capita usage be? Are they a four-unit household or a twenty-year household, right? And we also know what our overall average residential households are, you know, roughly seven, eight units a month. So you know, we, we will be able to kind of look and benchmark our, our data set of the, the folks that have signed up for the portal. We know who, who they are. And see how, what, what their usage is, compare that to an average city user and, and to see if there's any correlation. It may not be that the portal, you know, was the reason they were a lower user. It could just be their interest, but you know, the two go hand in hand, being aware, being conscious of reuse allows you to use less or become aware of the, et cetera, thing.
Yeah, maybe recycled water delivery. So what containers are available for this, for the customer to get one?
We, the customer can sign up on, on our webpage, the, we do provide the containers at the at the Corp Yard. Two oh five Wetlands. They can go in there, they sign up, they go through a training, which they can do the training online. And then they come in, we run them through a quick, how to fill up your container and, and you give them a sign and put in their yard and then give them their container and they operate on it.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions on this item? Council ready for public comment? We have public comment on this matter.
There are no hands raised at this time on the Zoom and there were no written comments received on this item.
Well, close call to comment. We'll come back to council for, for discussion. We have a resolution before us. Counselor.
All right, if there's no other comments, let me get to the thing. I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-one next in order. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, State of California, declaring a drought emergency stage two mandatory compliance water alert, water shortage, and calling for a twenty percent reduction of water used by all customers.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Motion second, roll call please.
Okay, Councilmember Oil. I'm sorry, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Move on now to management staff oral reports. Update on post-pandemic council meetings.
Yes, Mayor, I'll jump into that in a moment. We also have Erica and Rick actually has a, has it up big for us, as does Lincoln as well. So will they get jump on the screen here with us? Wanted to talk just a little bit about how we're going to be handling council meetings going forward. At the moment, our August third council meeting is also coincides with National Night Out. It would be very short consent type agenda, which we'll do by Zoom. We're targeting August seventeenth for our first quote-unquote hybrid council meeting. Where the council has approved some upgrades to the council chambers, new cameras, new equipment. And the goal is to create a new kind of council meeting. It'll look and feel a lot like the pre-pandemic council meetings in person, et cetera, except there's going to be one, one really big exception. And it's going to be to take what we've been doing here these last fifteen months or so, fourteen months, and to try and fold a Zoom room component into our council meetings. So the idea was that residents can participate by watching YouTube, they can be watching Granicus. They could be watching Channel twenty-eight, or they could be in person with us. All those were available before the pandemic. But we're also going to try and provide this Zoom room option where residents can watch via a Zoom platform on their, whatever devices they have and actually raise their hand and provide comments to the council via that application as well. You know, basically, if you're going to be in person, you're going to need to be in person at the council chambers. If you want to have a two-way conversation, if you have business for the council or presentations, that'll all be in person. But if you wanted to make comments from your living room on your device or wherever you are with your device, there would be an opportunity to have that one-way conversation. Those comments come in to the council that way. So still a lot of details to troubleshoot. And, you know, we're going to be working to educate the public on how they might be able to do that. But folks are starting to get a little more comfortable with Zoom and all we want to badly get back in person so that we can get back to the meetings that we're used to. We wanted to make sure that we still have this sort of an option available for folks who wanted to be able to participate remotely. So just a quick update there. And I will turn it over to Erica first with her update.
Yes, thank you. This week, I received the inquiry from the resident through City Manager Holly on a crosswalk concern at Elliott and Fallen Drive, which is the back entrance to the Kimberly Park. We had two nice ADA curb ramps in there, but no crossing across Elliott. So I went through analysis yesterday with Street Supervisor. And we went out there and we put in crosswalk today. So we're going to further evaluate other safety improvements. But there is now a crosswalk, ladder crosswalk on Elliott at Fallen Drive. We even received immediate feedback from a resident saying, thank you. I use that crossing every day and this will be helpful. So it's not complete yet. We ran out of materials at the end of the day, but for the most part, it is in place. There's signs up. So if you haven't been by there, please take a look. So thank you.
Thank you for that improvement. That's, I got, had gotten a, a comment letter from email from somebody on that issue. Concerned with safety. Thank you.
Next, we have Chief Greenberg.
Can I just hear me? I think I'm in now.
Yes, yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, Chief.
Evening again, Mayor and Councilmembers. My first update, I wanted to everybody know that our longtime officer, the outreach officer, Jeff Scott, got promoted to a sergeant and he's staying and his replacement is Officer Natalie Hurtado. And she was an officer a few years ago in Canyon. I think she was down there for about two years. And she started about the same time I did on June twenty-sixth, and she's doing an awesome job already. On Tuesday, August third, is National Night Out. And we're pleased to announce that we have eight block parties already signed up as of today. So it'll be a busy evening for Lobo, for all the A C P officers, the fire district folks, and of course, you all. Community members that would like to host a block party or see a list of the public parties should visit cityofmariancanon.org forward slash N N O or contact us at the police department. Officer Hurtado and Jen Camisback will be in touch with a party list and goodie bags for you guys to make your rounds and visit everyone. And then the following night, we're going to continue the celebration and have a booth at Mutant Street. And that's all I have for the update. There's any questions?
Lastly, Lincoln Bogart has an update as well. Lincoln, come on over.
Lincoln, you're in, but you're muted.
Okay, here I am.
Glad you, we got you now.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I wanted to update you on the status of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. We received the first half of our allocation on July thirteenth, so we could go today. It came in just under four point nine million for the full amount. So we received just under two point four five last week. And I wanted to let you know that we'll be discussing it in the upcoming finance committee meeting on August twelfth and bring strategies and potential uses for your consideration on August seventeenth.
I believe that's all that we had, Mayor, but thank you.
We'll move on to Mayor Council Committee reports. We'll seek out future agenda items after that. Councilmember Washington, anything to add to your report?
No, I've covered everything. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Paul?
No, I speak report, so I'll leave it.
Yes, yeah, we have a span of months. You've got a lot of activities out there. Vice Mayor Joseph?
Same here. It was a full, well, it was a month, so it was twice as much fun as, as normal.
Yeah. Well, I would say comments, I'd like to keep mine. It's hard to keep it to one page when there's all kinds of things happening. I just think the certainly the meet, you meet me in the street, it was a smash hit. I just think people have a lot of heads up needs to get, to have more human contact, I think. But very well done. Future agenda items? Anybody? Which agenda? Yes.
Yes, I mostly a status reports. I'd like to get a status report on the Green Island Road project. And some of the landscaping or, or at least what we're going to do with some landscaping areas at our, at the city's park and ride as well as the the new James Road landscaped areas. And then the last one, I was just reviewing the Climate Action Committee report talking about E V charging stations. And I'm a little discouraged because it appears that we have the lowest number of chargers in the entire county. So I'd like to have staff come back with a report that develops, that identifies a program or some method by which we can increase the number of those charging stations somehow. I know the Planning Commission is looking at some general plan amendments, but I'd like to jumpstart that with some kind of program that can be developed that can expedite that. So that's, that's what I would like to see.
I, well, apparently I had a meeting with a teacher at American High School, Beth Goff. Talked in the past about having maybe considering looking at having a student, a non-voting member for city council meetings, much like we have for Park and Rec. Something that could it would not be able to implement it within the coming school year, probably for year twenty twenty-two. But I think it gives an incredible opportunity for a young person to, who has that kind of interest to see how our government works and just would like to have a conversation with council colleagues and city staff on is that attainable? Is there a desire for all of us to have that? And how might we implement that? So that would be mine. Again, that's quite a ways out. I'll have a more information. I think I have some, a little write-up that Beth Goff put together on what they think the activities would be to share. And I could forward that to the city manager. And that would conclude my part. Anything else for the greater good, colleagues?
Yes, so Mayor, a couple of these feature items, the, the items related to status updates, those are I'll just call them routine. They're just sort of updates on, on projects, happy to provide that information. The, the next item related to E V charging stations, you know, as is our practice with adding future gen items, we'd like to have a motion and a second and a vote so that we have a moralized, you know, how we, how we're adding these new items. And that would go the same for the, the student member of city council.
Okay.
But for that new item also, so.
If you'd like to make a motion on your proposal?
I'll make a motion that staff come back with a report on expanding E V charging stations.
Okay, second. Motion second, roll call please.
Councilmember Oil?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, regard to the student participant city council meeting, non-voting, I'd like that motion.
What are you, what are you motioning, the discussion or actually making it?
The discussion about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. I think it's a good idea.
Motion second, roll call.
Councilmember Oil?
Yes, to a discussion.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you. Anything further for this evening?
No. Well, Council, we have concluded our business for the evening. Thank you very much.
Mayor Garcia. City Attorney Ross has a really good suggestion. Recently, former Superintendent, Napa Unified Superintendent John Glazer passed away. His, his service was two weekends ago. If you recall, he was the driving force by the American Canyon High School. They should probably name him after him, honestly. So Bill's suggestion, I think it's a good one, is that we adjourn this meeting in his memory.
We'll take a moment of silence and remember him and adjourn in a moment. Thank you. John Glazer was somebody I knew very well as well. With that being said, we adjourn in his memory. Thank you.
Hi.
Madam American Canyon.
Thank you.